Captains as leaders workshops at the beginning of each academic year and they held one this past August which over thirty of our student athletes attended over at Dedham High School, so that was well attended by our student athletes. The MIAA, which is Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, our governing body, holds many student athlete leadership conferences and I attended one two weeks ago with four of our seniors. It was a great event on health and wellness within sports and so the MIAA really supports our student athletes as well. Our coaches, teachers, and administration. There's a homework club that our kids attend. Certainly our teachers do a great job with before school and after school tutoring and extra help sessions. And as Mr. Pavlicek mentioned previously, our Milton High School boosters does a fantastic job with supporting our teams whether it's the Swing for Sports and the monies that they raise there. But any time our teams need uniforms or in need of uniforms or equipment that really either aren't part of the budget or tough to come up with within the budget, our boosters are always there to help support us and we appreciate all that they do for us whether they're out at the football or Brooksfield games or inside here during the winter games, manning those snack shops. Our boosters does a great job, so. Thank you all for your having me here tonight. We look forward to having you out at our games during the winter and if you have any questions for me, you're welcome to take those.
Becky, don't.
I'll be quick. It's not a question but a comment. I really like the communication. I think this was a fabulous job. I like that if I call, I hear the games on your phone, your voicemail, today the games at Milton High are, blah, 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 blah. I think that is great. The outreach to the community has really been fabulous and appreciated. And I can't say enough about what the sports meant to both of my kids at Milton High School. Helped them get here on time. It helped them get here. They knew if they didn't come, they couldn't practice. If they didn't practice, they couldn't play. So, and those are my kids who, school committee, you know, what do you mean you don't want to go to school? So it really does help kids tremendously and I'm so appreciative of it. And the final thing I wanted to say was that the Copeland Fieldhouse has done, is an incredible talent that we have and I appreciate that you're working to make the weight room updated to fit the quality of the Copeland Fieldhouse. There's no other place like the Copeland Fieldhouse in how beautiful it is. So I just think you're doing a great job and the whole program is just fabulous.
Thank you.
And if I could piggyback off of that, would you say for the community members, you don't have to be a Milton Public School student or a parent to come in and enjoy some of these events. It's a small community. Let's not wait until tournament play to support our fans. Let's help them get that ride to the tournament by showing it. We can have a home field or home court or home ice advantage. So again, come out and support the teams.
Sharon, then Ms. Padera.
Thank you. I want to thank you for that very comprehensive presentation. It was wonderful. And I do want to say that I think Larry, you are a wonderful role model for our student athletes because you present yourself as a professional, you're articulate, you are passionate about what you do, but you also show that you really care about the kids and that's, you know, that's so important and it comes through very strongly. So thank you for that. I just want to share one thing. I happened to see on the news this weekend, a local community, and I forget what community it was, but they have a new cap. It's called a guardian cap that they wear on top of their helmet and it's a big red thing. I don't know if you can get it in different colors, but it's called a guardian cap and you can actually, it's supposed to, you know, help eliminate or, you know, yes, it's for concussion. So I just didn't know. I know I asked you about it and you hadn't heard of it, but it might be something just worth looking into and finding available.
I have not heard of that, but we're always looking for ways to keep our student athletes safe. Concussions has been such a big part of sports today and, you know, the tough thing with that is it's not only taking kids off the athletic field, but it's keeping them out of the classroom.
That's right.
And when that happens, as parents, we're lost with what to do with those kids, whether it's one day or one week or one month. When they can't be going to school and they can't participate in their academics, they need to stay in a dark room or quiet, whatever it is, you're lost. And so any opportunity we have to keep our kids safe on the athletic field, we'd certainly look into that.
Can I just, that's exactly why he's so phenomenal, because he doesn't just care about the athletics. You care about, you know, you care about the whole child and the families and that was, it is true.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so my first question is, you talked about expanding possibly some of the sports at the Pierce. I don't know if we're, what kind of sports would that be? Soccer, volleyball? Do we, at liberty to say right now or we're still in the planning process?
We have a proposal in place right now for soccer for next fall.
Okay.
We're thinking about, well, Mr. Jett mentioned last year, we needed to go down to the middle school level for girls hockey. A great thing with that waiver about going down to the middle school for the girls hockey, there were twelve eighth graders that played and eleven are here at the high school.
Great.
To your question though, we're doing that again with our ski team and we're doing it as well with swim for eighth graders.
Oh, good.
So we're seeking the middle school, seventh and eighth grade skiers and eighth grade swimmers to participate in, on the high school teams. So soccer next fall, boys and girls. We're thinking about baseball and our softball in the springtime and we have the swim in the winter. And we're thinking, I met with Dr. Spalding earlier today about the swim piece and possibly a swim activity to be a grassroots program for the high school swim team. Hopefully they go varsity next year. If we have gym space and time, I would welcome the opportunity to have volleyball be part of that.
So is that a difficulty with the volleyball, the gym space?
It's gym space and, you know, the basketball is during that same season if it will be a winter sport.
Whatever was fall. I'm just saying, well volleyball is one of those sports that you don't see a lot of, like cross country.
We're in the process of looking at that.
You are? Thank you, Mr. Jett.
No guarantees.
One of our concerns in speaking with Dr. Spalding today is we have a very successful middle school cross country.
Yep.
Program. And this year in particular, we entered them into a league on the South Shore. We had some very good runners that finished, our girls program finished twelve, fourth out of twelve. Our boys finished sixth out of twelve and some of our top female runners were some of the top runners in that whole league. One of our concerns with having too many sports is we'd be taking away from where we really have our success. So if the numbers are great and the talent is great within a certain sport, we don't want to take away from that. But we certainly open, you know, to any opportunity. Soccer's a popular sport and if we could, if we could kind, increase the numbers and the participation at the middle school level, it's only going to improve at the high school level.
Well, I appreciate your efforts on all of those sports. And then just one last thing. I don't think you mentioned it, but I just wanted to mention it as an example of something I think that is really great in getting to these younger kids. For an example, I believe your high school cross country team is doing a trail run this weekend, are they not, for very young kids?
It's actually, I'm sorry, the week, not this coming weekend, the following weekend. It's on Sunday, the, no, it is this weekend.
It's this weekend, I think, yeah.
Sunday the sixteenth, you're right. This month is flying by. Sunday the sixteenth over at Glover School in Turner's Pond, I believe three different age groups or grade groups.
Starting in first grade.
First and second grade, third and fourth, and fifth and sixth, correct.
No, I believe it's six through eight. I can tell you everything, but you're doing a great job. But anyways, I love that that example of.
I'll have Ms. Padera do the rest of the presentation.
I do think it's great, a great idea to have these older kids in high school bring their sport and share a love of their sport with younger kids. It could be like just that that kind of gets them into it. And so I'm just highlighting that as an example and I just think that's a wonderful idea.
I wish I had more Coach Shaw's. He does a great job with his cross country indoor and outdoor track and this is just another example how he reaches out to the community to try to get more involved. Absolutely. Kelly?
Thank you very much for all this information. I have a question and a comment. The question is, so the, most of the data that you've provided is around participation. So do we have a goal for participation so that we sort of have something we're striving for? Or we just want to make it as accessible to everyone possible? I'm trying to figure out when, when, just like everything else that we're trying to do, being data driven and you have a lot of data in here, what are we trying to hit?
It's funny that you ask that because coming out here doing this presentation, I was saying to Larry, I wonder what the goal will be because participation, if you look at our fall sports, we were pretty much to the max. We could have added two students to the golf team, but again, you had to have golf clubs and all of that to increase it from ten to twelve. We could have add more students to football or more students to the track team, but if you increase that by ten percent, you're talking about adding forty-two point five students or forty-two or forty-three students to the team. And if you do that, then you're going to have to increase maybe coaching staff as well. So again, it's, what is the goal? Our goal is to make sure that as many students as possible have the opportunity to try out. We want to increase the trial participation. To Committee Member Padera's point, if students don't make it, if we know that there's a large interest, maybe we could then justify for doing like an intramural or something like that and building it. But it's hard to ask for those monies to set it up if we don't know if there's an interest. So our goal is to try to, A, make sure more sports accessible. Hopefully we have a diverse population in all athletics that reflects the diverse population in the town and then also providing something for students if they don't make the team.
And so that brings me to my next point. So I have three guys, one athletics all the way, you know, three sports a year, one did one sport, I think a couple years, and another did no sports. And so I guess, you know, say we have four hundred and twenty kids of the population that play a sport every semester, there's a whole bunch of other people that I think, and I think this ties in with hopefully where our physical education is going, that need to create habits, daily habits that can provide them with physical fitness throughout their lives. And I think it's wonderful that you're working on upgrading the equipment in the cardio and the, in the weight room. But as a parent of a child who would have liked to use it but wasn't involved in a sport, there was no time that, at least that he understood, that he could go and use that. But that would have been a great place to start creating those habits. And granted, limited space, limited resources, et cetera, but thinking about the remaining population at the high school and how we can include them in physical activity, not necessarily a sport, because some people get really intimidated by sports. But what kinds of things, maybe it is an intramural or something, maybe it's a zumba class, I'm not sure. And granted, again, all of those things take additional resources, but there's a whole bunch of people that we need to reach and just in terms of physical fitness.
I agree with you in to some extent, but I will disagree in the extent that it's only sports teams that utilize the weight room. Mr. Midora, Coach Midora, Teacher Midora, he has students in there on various days of the week working out. Some of those students are not on an athletic team. They go in there to work out, so I think that's a great thing. But to your point, it's also providing extra, other extracurricular activities, whether it's the arts, the performing arts, or, I mean, you look on the balcony, you have some donated ping pong tables that Ted Randall sets up for free and he has a ping pong tournament on some Thursday afternoons. So again, there's a lot that we have to do a better job of promoting to the public. You really get a lot at Milton High School in terms of some extracurricular activities.
Without a doubt. And again, I wasn't saying that we weren't. With regard to the weight room, just again, it's one of those things where unless you go in in an unintimidating environment, it's just like the reason that some of the private clubs have only women and all that kind of stuff. It's just creating opportunities for kids who maybe never have used a piece of that equipment.
Right.
To come in, not in an environment where they see all the guys lifting or whatever, but something that, you know, just an opportunity to start using it and see if it's something that they can start creating some lifelong habits. That's the only.
I agree with you. In starting this fundraiser for improving the weight room facility, it's just not our teams and student athletes that are using it. PE health classes are mandatory for all students nine through twelve and part of those units are to use the weight room and cardio room and have them be, have the weight room and cardio room be more accepting of all students, not just our athletes that are going to go in there and use them before the school day or at the end of the school day or to improve on the athletic team. So we want that to be more welcoming to all of our students. And we also utilize that for some of our adult education classes that go on in the evening. So absolutely, I agree with you. I want to make a point. You asked about what's our goal with this participation. I don't know if we're going to look back next year and have these numbers be more or less, but what's important to me more than the quantity is the quality of sports that we're putting out there in the field, the quality of coaching that our teachers and coaches, coaches are providing, and the quality of the experience that our kids are getting from our coaches. And if the, if the numbers increase, great, but if we're educating our kids on the athletic fields in a way that complements what goes on in the classroom and we can prepare our kids to possibly play college sports, but more importantly, to be productive people in society, living healthy lifestyles and being positive role models in the community, that's more important to me and that's a real important goal.
May I, to Mrs. Kelly's point, the way Larry Rooney sold me on this fundraiser, because the fundraisers before supplement the school budget and the fees. So the way Larry sold me on this fundraiser was, one, it's going to enable our students to be more competitive and he showed me films of other weight rooms and other districts. But more than that, he said that this will make the weight room part, didn't you, of the physical education classes where it's not now, to Mrs. Kelly's point. You said that the weight room will become an integral part of the other fifty or sixty or forty percent of students at Milton High School. And so that's, because for us philosophically, that's a lot of money that when fundraising usually goes into the pie that we saw up on the screen.
That was a nice job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thanks. We'll see you at some games.
Thank you, Larry.
Absolutely.
So we have some parents in the audience that are waiting for a particular agenda item and it's nine thirty-five, so I'm going to rearrange the agenda a bit. So we're going to do Transportation and Traffic Safety Subcommittee update, then we're going to do Finance Subcommittee and then we'll come back to see under the Superintendent's report.
Sounds good.
So in introducing the Transportation and Traffic Safety Subcommittee idea, last meeting, Vice Chair Zulus alluded to the fact that there were a number of parents that sensitized us to some of these issues and in fact, led us to the conclusion that the formation of a Transportation and Traffic Safety Subcommittee was one action we should take and we did. So it's only been a week, but Kristin, anything to report yet in terms of first steps?
Well Glenn, Mike and I briefly talked and have a meeting. You're looking blankly. We did talk, right?
No, no, I'm not. I'm trying not to look blank.
We did talk and figure out that we wanted to be able to, sorry, it's late. What can I say? It's late. To, like we brainstormed some agenda items or things we wanted to focus on, but the, we have to get other people involved and that was our next sticking point. So how do we go about, you know, is it like we've done in the past with the PTO folks? Is there a community member on it? Is there a representative of this group or are they from the other? So those are sort of the logistical things we got caught up in.
Okay. Right, and I think meeting time will be important because we'll need to get the Traffic Commission and.
Right.
Jake, who's the Transportation Director, has a teaching schedule, so.
Right. So I can follow up with Mike and Glenn's going to be there as the school representative, right? Is that right?
I think that was.
Yes, that's.
Yes, so Glenn's designated. So we'll come out with the time and then Mary can help us get that word out to people.
Great.
And we may not be able to get the Traffic Commission to be part of it, but we're certainly going to go be with them.
At some point, right.
Yes, okay.
Police Department, Traffic Commission.
That's right. We're going to go to all those people and talk to them.
And when, when Mike and I met with parents, there were a number of things they talked about that I'd just like to put on the agenda. Crossing guard deployment, sidewalks plowed in the winter.
Yep.
And on the deployment of buses, whether we might need more expertise so that we can get better utilization, number of riders on the bus, are the routes, the optimized routes or would it make sense to do different routes and we'd have fewer buses, more buses? So those are some of the things we talked about that I thought were important.
Yep. We, yeah, we did have the sidewalks because like on my side of town now, on Pleasant Street, they're all plowed. I started plowing them and the neighbor said, why are you plowing them? The town does. I'm like, what? So because it's a safety issue for the kids walking to Cunningham Colicott. The crosswalks that are the worst, those have to really be identified because there's different opinions about which ones are the worst.
Right.
So also working with the town master plan because there is going to be a lot of construction and so how is the safety, which is already bad, now going to be impacted even more? I think that's all that, I thought we came up with a long list of good things that we wanted to talk about in terms of solutions.
Great. Ms. Padera?
Can I just add one thing to the list I'm thinking about right now?
Sure.
Which would be the, that came up was the notification on bus lines, sometimes due to weather or a bus breakdown of telling parents like when a bus route's affected so they know when they're waiting for a bus or when their child's going to be late coming home from a bus. I think we, in years past, we've had a better notification system about that and maybe looking at that, how we notify parents and even adding like cellphone notifications, you know, if they want a special number for transportation to be notified. A lot of parents are on their way home or out somewhere with their cellphone or they're at the bus stop with their cellphone. So if we can look at a notification system for students there riding the bus, it'd be great.
Mr. Zulus?
So just to, to piggyback on what Kristin said, I think the next step is to get the committee constituted or get the people on the committee. And we have Kristin and myself and Glenn, who's the Assistant Superintendent of Business. We have the Transportation Director for the schools who's on the committee. And then what we voted was one parent from each elementary school and one parent from Pierce to be appointed by their respective PTO presidents.
Correct.
And so I think the next step may be to reach out to the PTO presidents to get that process moving. And that's, that's what we, that was, we had this discussion last Wednesday in our meeting, so.
And so Mary would do that, right, Mary?
Well, I think the most effective way may be an email from the two school committee members and we could send it out on your behalf and letting them know and giving them perhaps a deadline so they can communicate with their parents.
Okay.
I have a PTO meeting that you can come to and further discuss it, the PTO presidents. And then they bring the message back very skillfully to their PTOs.
Great.
So Mike, you and I can talk about that and set that up? Okay, great.
Finance Subcommittee?
Did we want to go right to the fee schedule?
No, let's do the warrant first.
Okay. Dr. Jett?
So the warrant that needs approval tonight is warrant number twenty. It's dated November thirteenth, which is this week, in the amount of five hundred forty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents.
I would move approval of warrant twenty in the amount just described by Dr. Pavlicek because I didn't get all the details.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Kelly, seconded by Mr. Zulus. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Four zero two.
Thank you. Next item is the recommended fee schedule for fiscal year sixteen. Pavlicek, do you want to just highlight the recommended changes because most of them are staying the same?
The fee schedule lists very few changes with regard to the buses. It still has the three hundred seventy-five per student, nine hundred family cap and it indicates that the East Milton Shuttle rate would be discontinued this year. That was the recommendation last passed at the Finance Subcommittee. The only other changes in it, there's a marginal increase in music lesson fees, one dollar per lesson fees there. The, on the rentals of facilities, the custodian food service, tech support staff fees have been incremented by two percent or so to reflect the increased cost of those positions. On the short-term rental, there's a minor change of ten dollars in the rental of the Pierce gym and of the elementary gyms. And for outside rentals, there's a change in elementary gyms and classrooms as well. So they're highlighted in yellow if you have the version from your, from your packet. Anything not in yellow is not changed. So these are the, from discussions with either our rental coordinator, our community schools is not recommending any changes, our adult ed is not recommending any changes, preschool is not changed in here. We will, kindergarten, there's no change listed in the full day kindergarten fee. We'll probably revisit that in the spring depending on what the status of tuition, whether the grant is still available or what. But at this point, it would look, I would suspect there would be no change in that as well. So it's just a matter of several of the rental fees and the issue of the buses.
So I would move approval of the recommended fee changes, I guess as presented on the FY sixteen fee schedule dated ten twenty-eight, with the changes highlighted in yellow, with the exception of the East Milton Shuttle is not highlighted, but that's being recommended to be discontinued.
Moved by Ms. Kelly?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zulus. Discussion? Ms. Padera?
I'd like to move to divide the question, to take the bus fee vote separately.
Okay.
I mean, I guess that would be a friendly, asking for a friendly amendment to my motion.
That's correct.
Which if the committee's in agreement, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
So then the first motion would be all the fee recommendations with the exception of the East Milton Shuttle change.
Second.
Just a point of clarification. Is it all of transportation, Becky, that you want to take out or is it just the East Milton Shuttle?
No, all transportation. Oh, all transportation, sorry.
That isn't what you said, sorry. The bus fees. Timeline for K and Y. The bus fees.
So moved by Ms. Kelly, this is all fees except transportation, seconded by Mr. Zulus. All in favor? Unanimous on the transportation fees?
I'll move as recommended on, by the administration.
Moved by Ms. Kelly, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Zulus. All in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion.
I'd like to amend the motion to make the individual fee three twenty-five and the family cap seven fifty.
You accept that as a friendly amendment?
I do not, no.
And we'll have to vote on the motion first?
And just as.
Thank you. Yes?
Well, the thing is, is if this motion wins, then there's really no opportunity to open that. So if you'd like to explain why you would want to be doing that?
So here's the thing. We're raising the, we're eliminating the East Milton Shuttle, but we're in effect raising but we're in effect raising the bus fee for 10% of our riders, about 70% if it's 375. And so my understanding is, looking at the background that Mr. Pavlicek has done, our fees are relatively high in comparison to other communities. This is an opportunity, in my mind, if we're raising that fee, the collection amount raised is about 23,000. So lowering the fee to everybody to 325 is really in, the money's, we're raising 23%, 23,000 more, but where's that money going? We're just collecting that much more in fees. So the cost of this, and Mr. Pavlicek can correct me if I'm wrong, sounds to be about 4,000 for the individual fee or 2,000 and 2,000 for the family cap after you take out the increased fees for the other folks that's fee was lower. And I don't think that's a huge amount of cost for what we're doing because it's a huge increase for those people and the other folks are paying a higher fee than looks like other communities, so I just think it's fair. Our family cap, especially, is very high in comparison to other communities, so I just think it's a fair amount for what we're looking at because we are raising the fee on some, and fair enough if we're all agreed with paying the same rate with everybody, I just think we need to equalize that across. If we're, a lot of people are paying a lot more, then why can't the fee be a little bit lower in general? In addition to that, just to add, we might, that doesn't necessarily mean, that's the numbers if the ridership stays the same, but we might get increased riders in some other parts of town because their fee is lower. So our revenues might be the same, we can always reevaluate next year and see what that fee did. If we've looked at, a lot of people increased it in this area or this area. I do think there's, speaking as elementary parent, there's a lot of drivers coming to these elementary schools and anything we can do to either maintain the ridership on the buses we have or even increase it in some areas would be beneficial on the safety side of things, so that's my seven cents.
Sure.
Sorry, could, Mr. Pavlicek, could you please clarify the point that Mrs. Padera was just making? Is that, do you think it will somewhat be at a break even if we lower the price but equalize it for everybody? Because to go from $225 up to $375 is a big jump. So if we, if we reduce it to 325, equalize it a little?
Based on current ridership, and I don't have the full details of it, but I know how many people ride each bus, I know how many people pay and how many people don't pay. Two of the buses cross into East Milton, so some people are maybe paying 225 and some people pay 375, but I'll, I made an adjustment there. I actually have a little spreadsheet that figures out based, what works for the, the different fees. If, just on the matter, without adjusting the family cap of equalizing all the fees at 325, I estimate it's about a $4,000 loss in, in revenue from about 178,000 to about 174,000 in bus fees.
Did you, sorry, did you say that's without lowering the family cap?
That's without lowering the family cap. Lowering the family cap has less of an effect because very few people are at the $900. If you lower it to 750, you're only, you're probably only affecting 10 families, so it's only a couple of thousand dollars more. So I think an estimate of $6,000 to $7,000 loss of revenue by changing this is a good estimate.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? $6,000 total or $6,000 bus?
Total.
Difference?
Total is 6,000 that we would lose if everybody went to 325.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we lowered the cap from 900 to 750.
One comment I have, that's okay, I do think that it's really important that our rate is equalized. You know, it's got to be the same for everybody, one way or the other. I mean, this seems like it could be a good compromise. It might not be able to last because we can't, you know, but for $6,000, I could certainly live with it and see how that works. The issue with, the other thing that's come up is whether people can pay in installments, and I know that would be a nightmare, but that would be something.
They can.
They can't.
They can.
They can? Oh, somebody asked me why they couldn't. I said, "I don't know."
We have, we have made arrangements to pay in installments.
Thank you, so that's, that makes me feel better too.
Two or three, but it's, not weakly, but.
Yeah, no, but just so the people, people know that. And then the other thing, and maybe it's just a little thing, but we have to have some agreement over which towns we compare ourselves to because I saw lots of towns that Glenn presented that we pay less, then other people come in and say, "No, we pay." We have a certain amount of towns that we tend to compare ourselves to, so I'd like to see us agree on, you know, those are the 10 towns we use for various reasons. I think that's important because there's a whole bunch of towns being thrown out there and we have to compare our bus fees to those towns, just like we compare everything else to. And, I had another point, but I'm tired, so I forgot it. Come back to me, Mary, are you going to raise your hand?
Sure. So unfortunately, we have fees all over the place. I think I've always been a proponent that the more money out of our general fund that we spend on transportation is money that we are not spending on a teacher in the classroom. We're going into a budgetary season that we don't have any overrides on the horizon, at least not that I've heard, and it's going to be a difficult budgetary year. So if it came down to decreasing the fee versus saving a teacher or even half a teacher for that matter, my vote would be saving the teacher. So I am still in favor, although I understand all the concerns, I know it's a big jump. Every family needs to make decisions. I think that's one of the reasons why we wanted to have this discussion early in the year so families could make plans for next year. And I think the safety concerns are a huge issue and I think we're going to address that going forward with the Subcommittee and working with the Police Department and others. So I am still in favor of the motion that's on the, on the table, which is to increase the rates to the present rates that are in there, 325 and 900.
Michael first. So it sounds like we're all in agreement that we need to take steps on the safety issue. It sounds like we're all in agreement that everyone should pay the same amount for the same service. So then the question is, what's the right rate? What are the right fees? And from what Glenn provided to us, the rate went to 350 with an 850 cap in 2007, seven years ago, and increased by $25 three years ago. So if the rate's too high, it's been too high for a long time. I don't know whether it's too high. Seems to me that you could, there, you could go a lot of different ways in the, in the research with, or the comparable communities. There's certainly a lot of other variables that each community has to look at when it's setting its fee, it's setting its fees. So it's hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison with other communities because we look at a lot of different variables and they have their, they have their interests and they have their concerns and we have our interests and our concerns. I don't see a compelling reason to dramatically, to drop the rate, given that it's been in that range for the last seven years and the administration is recommending that it stays the same. I tend to look to the administration as the experts in this, in what it should be. And certainly in this town, in the last five years, we've had a lot of rigorous review and decision-making of budgets, not only on this committee but across town. And it just strikes me that to drop the rate for, for the reason, it's a legitimate reason that it's, these are difficult, difficult things to, it's difficult to raise the rate by that level for certain amount of the families in Milton to make it equal. But it seems to me that that would be a departure from what we've been doing across town over the last five years, certainly since I've been involved and certainly on this committee for the last couple of years, the kind of rigorous budgetary decision-making that we've been going through. And so I don't see a compelling reason to depart from the, from the, the recommendation of the administration on this.
So I would just say that I do think there's compelling reasons if you just go to a lot of our elementary schools where there are too many people driving to school. And I do think that the last time we raised the rate, our revenue actually went down. So raising, raising the rate for all of these people, which is what we're doing and collecting more revenue, doesn't mean that we're necessarily going to get more revenue. We could get less. We could get more revenue from lowering the rate for everyone. And I think $6,000 is a very low amount as a good compromise to look and see where that takes us. If we get reduced traffic at our elementary schools and our revenues are the same or even up, then we'll know what that rate does because it sounds like a small amount, but a $50 can make a big deal, a difference for families and a family cap of 750 instead of 900 can make a big difference. Once, a lot of parents from who I've talked to, once they have one student go, that's fine, then the next student comes along and it's just too much. They can drive for the same amount of difficulty and drive two students as much cheaper than one. So I do think it's a compelling reason and I think that, of course, every dollar's important in our budgetary process, but I think safety and getting kids to school on time is important too, and this is something we can continue to reassess every year. It's not a huge hit we're taking with the transportation fees. It's just looking at, we're raising the fee 70% with 375 with some of these parents and I think this is a good compromise to look at. So I would just say that's what I have to weigh in on the fees and I, you know, that's why I think that way.
Ms. Kelly?
So I'm a little concerned that you're describing parents driving to school as a safety issue and so this is really, I think you've mentioned it before and I'd like to have more specifics because I'm not aware of any of this. And if the administration believes that we have safety issues because we have too many families driving to schools, I think certainly it should be put on the Subcommittee as an issue. But I guess I'm trying to understand, it's one thing to get to school on time and that's, you know, a whole nother issue, I think, not the same as safety.
Well, I think that the, the point is that when you have too many people driving, a lot of our schools are not built for having drivers' lines that extend in certain areas or people parking along streets that are neighborhood streets. And when you get too many people parked in places, especially in the winter, you have kids crossing and causing safety situations. That's all I mean. There's not like people driving and driving over, you know, getting in, it's just additional traffic at schools where kids are walking, kids are biking, it just causes additional congestion, which can lead to safety issues. It could just deal with congestion as well, so that's my point.
I would want to make clear that we kept, keep the safety separate from the fees, even though I think you raise a good point. So, sorry, Lyndley, I didn't mean to.
Sure.
Sorry, I think I'm losing my voice as the night goes on. So I, I do feel strongly that we need to equalize the, the fees and it does seem like a large, large jump from $225 to $375 for some families to go, to pay an additional $150 this year. So, I mean, I would be even in favor of equalizing it and staying at 350. I don't want to muddy the water, but I just, I think in all fairness that, that that is a very large leap to make with families to, to, you know, they've been used to paying $225 and now they're going to have to pay $375 per, per child, per bus. So that would be my rationale really for lowering or at least maintaining what we currently charge for our buses across, across the town, so. And, I mean, I, I did feel strongly about the $900 and the fact that Glenn said that it only impacted around 10 families. Again, you know, to, to lower it to 750 or even 800, you know, I mean, it's just, if we're, if we're willing to go down a little bit, I think that every, you know, every hundred dollars is a lot of money to our families and to, to charge, the combination between charging another $150 plus the cap is, seems like a lot to me, so. I'm not sold, I'm not totally locked into Becky's numbers, but I, but I absolutely think that coming down is a.
So what numbers are you suggesting? I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I think we should vote, what, I'm not going to tell, sorry.
Oh.
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
Right.
That we have to vote.
We're voting on the amendment.
We don't have to vote on the amendment, it wasn't accepted as a friendly amendment.
So I need an amendment?
That's after the motion was made, so if we vote on the motion, then if that fails, then we can listen to the amendment.
Can you explain? I couldn't hear you. It's hard.
We have a motion on the floor that we have to vote. If that motion fails, then we can hear Becky's amendment and vote on that.
Yeah, and Glenn seems.
She, she moved to amend the motion on the floor.
Wasn't accepted as a friendly amendment.
No, but she, she just needs a second. And then it becomes, she doesn't have to be friendly.
Well, seconded.
Because then it becomes the prevailing motion. It's a move to second, it's a move to amend. You vote the amendment and if it fails, you go back to the original.
Did somebody second it though? I don't think anybody did. Just now or before?
Okay, according to our parliamentarian.
He is our parliamentarian.
So, you want to state what your motion is?
Yeah, my motion is to amend the fee for one student for transportation, 325 and the family max to 750.
Okay. On the motion to amend, which is to reduce the individual fee, per student fee to 325 and the family cap to 750. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion fails. Now we're back to the original motion, which is to accept the superintendent's recommendation for fiscal '16 transportation fees. All in favor?
Oh, can we have a discussion?
Oh, we had a discussion.
Well, now it's changed.
Yes.
Because the, sorry. So I would like to make a friendly motion that, that we adapt it to $350 across the board rather than the 375 that's proposed.
Second. I don't have to second it, right?
Well, no, someone has to.
Oh, well, then I seconded it.
If it's not accepted as a friendly amendment.
Oh.
No, I'm not accepting it.
Not accepted as a friendly amendment. So on the motion to amend the individual fee to 350, do you have a motion on the family cap?
Can we take them separately?
Sure.
Can you say it again?
I'm sorry.
You're losing your voice.
I know, I really.
I'm losing my hearing, so.
It's, so my motion is to equalize the bus fees per child and make it $350 per child, so we're not increasing up to 375 and we're increasing the, we're maintaining what it was for some students and we are raising it $125 for others.
Mr. Zulus?
Can I just seek a clarification? I don't think anyone's trying to raise the fees this year. I think it's 375 now and no one's trying to raise it. It's not 350 now, as I understood, I could be wrong, but I thought it was 375 now.
375.
It's 375 across.
Right, it's 375 across the board, so nobody's talking about raising it, I think.
Right, so I'm just trying to make it so that East Milton isn't paying so much more and, and by making them all 350, it's 125.
Right, so lower the rate, lower it from 375 to 350.
Exactly, sorry.
Can you say that? Can it? Somebody want to state it?
So everyone will pay $350.
Is that, that's your motion?
Bus fee.
So second.
Okay. On the motion to make the per student fee for fiscal '16, $350. All in favor?
I couldn't hear you, Lori.
I couldn't hear you, Leroy.
The motion to make the individual fee, three hundred and fifty dollars. All in favor? Opposed. Does not carry.
Back to the original motion.
Look back to the original motion if you want, which is still on the table.
That's correct.
It's on the table.
Any discussion on the original motion? Ms. Sheridan?
Motion to amend the family cap in the original motion, down from nine hundred to seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Is that seconded?
Second.
Yes.
Second.
On the motion to amend the family cap.
So is it just that or it's the whole?
I thought you wanted to take them separately.
No, now I'm okay with taking it separate because we've gotten to a place where there are no options.
Okay.
So it would, so what we're talking about is three seventy-five individual and seven fifty for our family cap, correct?
That's correct.
So what are you on the amendment?
Yes. The, the amendment is three seventy-five per student and seven fifty for a family cap.
Well, three seventy-five's not an amendment.
Right, just a seven fifty.
Right, just a seven fifty is an amendment.
Correct, sorry.
That's right.
Is everyone clear on that?
Yes.
Three seventy-five per student, seven fifty family cap. On that motion, all in favor? Opposed, that does not carry.
Wow.
So, on the original motion, unless there are any other ideas? On the original motion, which is the superintendent's original recommendation, three seventy-five, nine hundred dollar family cap. All in favor? Opposed? Does not carry. We're nowhere, ladies and gentlemen.
Using all your parliamentary rules tonight.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Can we look to the administration to give us some guidance around this or is the three seventy-five, is the three seventy-five the best guidance that you guys can come up with?
There's lots of documents.
There is one other option.
Ms., go ahead.
What's the other option?
And, and we've talked about it previously and that was to go in steps over a two-year process.
Yeah. I, I thought that might be a good idea. I don't think it's a good idea anymore, so I'm not prepared to make that motion.
You're not?
I guess the question is, did any of the other members, is that amenable? Because the issue is that we would be looking out beyond one year in this scenario. And, and the scenario would be that you, for next year, for those that were participating in the East Milton Shuttle, their increase would be halfway to the three seventy-five and then the following year, it would be to equalize to whatever that rate is that has been floated.
So my only problem with that is one of the things that I thought was incentive of lowering the fee for everyone is that it was fair to have everyone have a lower, some people would have a lower rate, some people were paying a lot more than they had previously, but the fact was we were equalizing the rate. And then we could look at whether that lower rate in some areas would actually bring in more riders. So, you know, I can certainly look at that option in terms of compromise, but I just think it's, it's just a better avenue to do. We're talking about six thousand dollars and we can look at and reevaluate after last, next year and say, oh, wow, like, the ridership did go up here or it didn't. This didn't work at all and maybe, and we're not making enough revenue, you know? So that's my point, but go ahead.
I, I think part of the problem is, I think we're analyzing data without enough data points, right? So there's assumptions being made that when we raise the rate at one point, that ridership went down. We don't have any data to prove that, except that just there was an, you know, a total number of collections that was less than a previous year, but then I think it went up after that. And, and so from that perspective, and I guess from that perspective, going into what I believe will be a tough budgetary year, I think we're going to be looking for every penny we can save. And again, this is why I say when it comes to a transportation dollar versus a teacher, there is no choice for me. It's always going to be the teacher. And so what's being suggested, because part of your, I think, desire, a, a big driver of your desire to lower the rate is to make it not so impactful to those families who are going to be impacted. So I guess what I'm proposing, and again, I'm not going to make the motion, somebody else can if you think it's something that we could, we could take up, but to just for East Milton Shuttle families right now, for them to get a, some increase next week, next year, and then after that to equalize to whatever the, the going rate is for the following year.
Well, I'm just going to put out there, though, that I do think we're, we're equalizing the rate, but we're telling those families that are already paying three seventy-five, which some of those people had really good points, it's like, why am I paying three seventy-five? I'm living on a very dangerous street. So we're raising the rate with other people, but we're not, we're not, we're, we're just collecting twenty-three thousand more in revenue and there should be a savings for someone if we're raising the rate on another group of people.
But you don't know that that's going to happen. Those, some of those families may decide they can't afford the rate and they're not, they're going to drive.
But there's, there's another assumption, right? We don't know that.
Exactly. And, and I think that's why we're, this is a very tough place to be.
It is.
So if no one else wants to make that dual-year steps motion, then I think we're, at least, I think we're stuck.
Well, Ms. Sheridan, why don't you move to reopen on the motion you made?
I can't hear. Which one? I made a field. We can't hear you down here.
Put your mic closer to you. We can't really...
Why don't, Ms. Sheridan, why don't you move to reopen? You have, it has to be one of the people that voted in the affirmative on your motion, three seventy-five and seven hundred and fifty dollar family cap.
No. Well, you're just choosing a motion.
Which I'm now prepared to support.
Okay. Well, then I'll reopen on lowering the student rate to three fifty and lowering the family max to seven fifty.
So that's different.
Motion has to be reconsidered by someone on the prevailing side.
Correct.
It didn't prevail.
I was on the prevailing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She wasn't on the prevailing side.
None of them.
You're right, none of them prevailed.
Oh, none of them prevailed.
None of them prevailed.
But so she's making a new motion.
Someone voted against it.
Someone voted against it.
Has to move reconsideration.
I, then I move that we, Ms. Sheridan's motion for three seventy-five and a seven hundred and fifty dollar family cap.
Second.
We'd have to get proper tools in order.
So this is on the motion to reopen or reconsider. All in favor?
Wait, so it's three...
We're just reopening.
We're just reconsider.
Oh, motion to reopen, to reconsider?
To reconsider the previous vote.
God, you're here, Glenn.
So, on the motion to reconsider, all in favor? Oh, it's unanimous. Okay. On the, on the motion itself.
Make the motion to a trial. No, sorry.
Second.
Any discussion?
Could you say it again, please?
On the motion to, on the, now, the motion itself, any discussion?
So this motion is three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five and a seven hundred and fifty.
With a family cap of three fifty.
Seven fifty.
What did I say?
Three fifty.
Oh, sorry. Seven fifty.
Mr. Zulis?
So we're reducing, we would be reducing the family cap from nine hundred to seven fifty. And Glenn, what do you think the financial impact of that would be? What's the estimate?
Probably in the neighborhood of two thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars?
Small.
And, and the ration, I'm sorry, the rationale for doing that, for when we have to go to other town boards, i.e. the warrant committee, and we're asked about reducing fees, the rationale for that is?
The impact is two thousand dollars and we needed some consensus on an issue that was difficult to reach consensus on.
It's tough having a six-member board.
Yes, it is.
Maybe we should wait till next meeting.
Can I ask a question?
I can roll back to seven.
It's ten fifteen, so who knows how coherent I'll be. I know that you said that we have a payment plan and we have all that. Is there a way to formalize or publicize the fact that there is a payment plan, what it looks like, how you get it, that there is a way to request for a deduction? I know with the sports, if you're free and reduced lunch, yes, but if your parent gets laid off or if something happens with your house, you don't meet that free and reduced lunch, but you really, things are pretty tight. So they'll work with families around that on, you know, whatever. Could we do something like that to say more of if this is a financial hardship, which I know it is for me, that there would be a way, this is how you apply, this is how you can get a deduction?
The process has been, you know, it's, it hasn't been widely publicized, but if someone calls up and says they have an issue, we make, you know, as with the athletics, we make every effort to, to work with the families. And that's been going on for a number of years, back to the previous...
Right, but formally, we don't.
You know, there's, we don't have a application form or anything like that, but if someone comes up and says, I want my kids to ride the bus, but I can't make the payments, can you, can we work something out? We do.
But are you asking as part of this motion, can the administration?
Yes.
Be more proactive in terms of publicizing that availability?
That there is a process that you could do, just like with athletics, the coaches and the teachers are also pushing for kids to go, because kids or the families aren't going to ask for the lower fees. So coaches and teachers say to kids, you need to, this is okay to do. So how could we make that more accessible to families so that families who really do need it can apply for it in a above-board manner, not just word of mouth?
So whoever the author of this motion is at this point, I, I would say that there's a friendly amendment to include some proactivity on the part of the administration to make clear that payment plans are an option. So either I'm talking to myself or I'm talking to Ms. Sheridan.
You're talking to yourself.
Okay.
You're talking to yourself.
Accepted.
I would just like to go on the record before we take the vote in just saying one more time that I think rising, raising a whole portion of our community from three hun, two hundred and twenty-five dollars to three hundred and seventy-five dollars in a year is a lot of money to go up. I just want to say it one more time.
Seventy percent?
Just saying.
Mr. Zulis?
I agree that it's a lot and I agree that it's very difficult. So the, the motion that's on the floor now is to lower the family cap to a hundred dollars lower than what was set in two thousand and seven. And a hundred dollars less than what the family cap was from two thousand and seven through two thousand and thirteen, I guess. And so my question is, does the, does, in, does the, does the administration have a revised recommendation on that?
I'd say it doesn't matter if they have a revised recommendation, there's a, there's a motion on the floor. And you could, we can ask them if they have an opinion.
Well, yeah, I totally agree that they, they don't have to have a recommendation, but I'm, I'm asking if they have a recommendation on that. I, I can ask that. They, it doesn't have to be part of the motion. I can ask if they have a recommendation. They may say no.
I've always talked about the family cap in terms of in transit, in summer enrichment, in athletics, the cap seems to be two or right under two children. And so that makes it, that recommendation of seven hundred parallel to...
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty to what it is in summer enrichment and what it is in sports. So I would do that. But I know what you're saying. All these years, it hasn't been that, but the number of families is small, but it would parallel two or one point eight number of children.
Just as another added benefit is families whose all their children take the bus, like we have numerous families at the same stops, makes the bus routes shorter, from my understanding. So the more people you have making use of those, because maybe they'll be able to because they have a family cap, it's lower. I'm just saying it's, it's another benefit sometimes we don't think about.
On the motion, three seventy-five per student, seven hundred and fifty dollar family cap. All in favor? Opposed? Five to one. Motion carries.
Nicely done.
You've reopened. Now you have to vote it.
What?
You've reconsidered the motion.
We voted to reconsider already.
No, we did that, Glenn. We did that.
That was a five to one. Thank you.
I barely say this, Glenn, but you're wrong.
It's too bad, Mar, it's too bad.
But you just amended it, so you have to vote the motion now.
You amended what?
You reconsidered a motion to amend. You then voted to amend. You have to vote the amended motion.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You've amended the motion, now we have to vote on the motion. He's right.
No.
Yeah, you reconsidered a motion to amend.
Yeah.
That was the first vote. Then you revoted the motion to amend, which you did.
No, no. We took a vote to reconsider a motion.
And a motion was made.
Yes. So we voted to reconsider.
And you did, you sort of did a friendly amendment to that motion by adding on...
It was my, it was apparently my motion.
Correct.
So what are we in agreement on here?
We're in agreement, I believe that we...
I think you're in agreement.
Yeah, Glenn, I, I think, I think the, the motion, the original motion, Mary's original motion didn't carry. And then Leroy moved to reconsider the amendment, Lynda Lee's, Lynda Lee's. So I think since that, Mary's original motion had been, not defeated, but not, didn't carry, I think that...
Well, you've, you voted, you, the last vote voted to amend because it was a motion to amend. So amended the original motion, which didn't carry.
Right.
So now...
That's right. That's right. That's right.
I, I think it's pro forma. I think we know where we're going, so I'm not too worried about it.
So, moving on.
Yes, why don't we?
To the FY sixteen advancement budget. Do we have a slide presentation?